Welcome to our October 28 Gilbert Town Council Study Session. We begin in preparation for Thursday night with assignments. In the first part, and then with presentations and proclamations, Councilmember Ray, if you could introduce the scouts. And there is a scout troop coming that we got an email from, and I'll pass it on to you just so you're aware. Item number one, the proclamation related to Extra Mile Day, Councilmember Peterson. And it's a perfect fit, and we thank you for all the extra mile efforts related to the last Saturday. Make a Difference Day was fabulous. I know we had a lot of different groups do smaller projects, and then the big projects, Forest City, and Councilmember Peterson led the way. Thank you for the extra mile efforts.
Mayor, to be fair, that's a reflection of our community, it really is, and we appreciate everyone who was involved, so thank you.
Which is perfect for you to talk about Extra Mile Day. Thank you. Number two, Councilmember Taylor, if you could read the Veterans Week proclamation. Agenda item number three, Councilmember Cooper, the American Diabetes Month proclamation. Agenda item number four, Councilmember Daniels on the recognition of Michaela. Agenda item number five will be Vice Mayor Cook. And, related to Susan Goodwin, and to our town manager, and Mark, it would seem like we would want the two of you, and then Town Attorney Mike, and then you may have others to make sure you're up there for picture and just recognition. Agenda item number five, by special assignment, Kurt Sharp will make that presentation. And agenda item number seven, Town Manager Patrick, the ICMA Award, if we had you present We don't wear any Cardinals red shirt that night, but you'll probably look sharp in a Giants jersey. Or is that at the parade? No, okay, well, we'll get that figured out later. So those are the assignments, will those work out? Okay, thank you. Related to the council meeting, I think I'm going to jump ahead, and you'll understand why in just a moment. Agenda item number 27, 28, related to the e-cigarettes. Why don't we have that presentation first, because that's planned, and then we'll come back and see what additional items that you would like to talk about. So, agenda item number 28, please.
Hello, Mayor Lewis, members of the Town Council. My name is Brooke Wheeler, and I'm the new Native American Management Intern for the Town of Gilbert. Really excited to be here. I've been working on this brief of e-cigarette regulation and state laws for the past month now. Some of you have read the novel of the brief that I wrote, and I will be presenting the highlights of that brief today. Let me go ahead and pull this up. So, okay, e-cigarettes. So what is an e-cigarette? Well, it's a battery-powered heating device that is used to deliver liquid nicotine to users in a vapor form. And it's important to note that e-cigarettes contain nicotine, it doesn't contain tobacco. It's derived from the tobacco plant, but that's very important to remember, that it contains nicotine, not the tobacco. It mimics the appearance of several cigarettes, and they also look like cigars, pens, USB memory sticks, you name it. As of January 2014, there's 466 e-cigarette brands, and over 7,000 different kinds of flavors. And they range from coffee flavors, tobacco, menthol, candy, and fruit flavors, so it ranges the gambit. So, the history of e-cigarettes. E-cigarettes was introduced in China, it was invented in China in 2003, but it did not come to the United States until 2007. Since then, e-cigarette use has doubled every year since 2010. It's a booming industry. Over 250 brands in America, they're made by American tobacco companies, and as well as independent companies as well. The industry is estimated to be worth $1.7 billion, so like I said, it's a very booming industry. So what are the potential health risks? The safety and the risk of e-cigarettes are uncertain due to the lack of clinical and long-term studies. But I did find in my research, second-hand e-cigarette smoke contains less hazardous chemicals than regular cigarettes. However, they do contain a higher level of toxic metals absent from tobacco cigarettes. And these metals are tin, nickel, chromium. They were four times higher than in regular cigarettes, so they do pose some concern. A study from the FDA found that e-cigarette cartridges contain formaldehyde and other toxic chemicals like dithylene glycol, found in antifreeze. It was a small percentage, but it was still there, which raises some concern. And liquid nicotine found in e-cigarettes can be lethal if inhaled and ingested or absorbed by the skin. So what's going on at the federal level when it comes to e-cigarettes? Well, e-cigarettes are currently not regulated at the federal level. However, the FDA was given authority to regulate the industry in April 2014. And what they're looking at is to prohibit the sales of e-cigarettes to minors, prohibit the use of vending machine sales in certain venues, prohibit distributing free samples, and requiring all companies to list their product ingredients. It's unknown at this time when they're going to release their regulations. They did finish a public comment period back in August that garnered 72,000 comments, so they're going to look through those comments and then form their regulations. They are also hosting some workshops in December to get some more scientific evidence, but like I said, right now, we don't know when those regulations are going to come down. I've read anything from a year to possibly even more. So, in lieu of the lack of regulation from the FDA, Congress has introduced the Senate Bill 2047, the Protecting Children from Electronic Cigarette Advertising Act of 2014. And this is just really looking at advertisement to youth. And it prohibits the advertisement of e-cigarettes to minors, and it directs FTC to define youth advertising. So can e-cigarette companies advertise at concerts? Can they advertise at venues where youth are congregating? On September 18, 2014, the Senate Committee announced plans to hold an executive session to look at this bill at the end of this year. So, due to the lack of federal regulations, states have taken upon themselves to regulate e-cigarettes. Forty-one states currently prevent the sale of e-cigarettes to minors, and this also includes Arizona. Three states have more comprehensive laws right now that restricts the use of e-cigarettes from workplaces and public places. We have 11 states with less restrictive laws, but they do restrict e-cigarettes in certain venues like schools, state buildings, hospitals, and childcare centers. And two states levy taxes on e-cigarettes, and this is Minnesota and South Carolina. Arizona does levy a luxury tax on tobacco, and some lawmakers are considering taxing e-cigarettes to generate revenue from the $1 billion projected budget deficit coming So at the state level, Arizona law has the Smoke-Free Arizona Act, which regulates the use of tobacco products from enclosed public spaces and places of employment. But, e-cigarettes is not under this act because it is not considered a tobacco product. However, we do ban the sale of e-cigarettes to minors of under age 18. At the local municipal level in Arizona, Coconino County, Mojave County, Pima County, the city of Tempe, the town of Guadalupe, have all passed ordinances to restrict the use of e-cigarettes. Tempe and Guadalupe have the most comprehensive laws restricting e-cigarette usage in enclosed public places and places of employment. Coconino County is just unincorporated county buildings, vehicles, and enclosed public spaces. Pima County, county buildings, properties, and vehicles. Where Mojave County is just the county buildings and the properties because there was some concern that employees would not be able to leave the premises if they were not allowed to smoke e-cigarettes on the premises. So they just kept that in. Currently, Maricopa County and Yavapai County are considering e-cigarette ordinances. At the tribal level, interestingly enough, the Navajo Nation is the only tribe to include e-cigarettes in their smoke-free policies. And it prohibits the use of tobacco products and e-cigarettes within 25 feet of public and workplaces on the reservation. And currently, no tribe right now has included e-cigarettes in their smoke policy in casinos because they're afraid of losing revenue there. So lastly, we have Arizona schools and universities who have restricted use of e-cigarettes. Arizona State University, it's just university-owned leased facilities, vehicles, grounds, properties, and parking structures. U of A is very similar, however, they have included athletic facilities within their policy. You can only smoke e-cigarettes and tobacco products in designated areas, stadiums, and so forth. Community colleges, we have Mojave Community College, Pima Community College. School districts, we have Flagstaff, Lake Havasu, Tucson, and it's important to note that they both have incorporated these, not only in their student handbooks, but also in their employee policies as well. And so, without any, if you have any further questions, I'll just hand it off to Heather, who will talk about the stakeholder aspect.
Mayor Lewis and members of the council, for the record, Heather Wilkie, Intergovernmental Relations Assistant for the town. Per your request during the June 24 session, study session on this issue, Intergovernmental Relations staff took the lead in organizing two stakeholder meetings and soliciting feedback from associations, businesses, and citizens regarding a proposed ordinance that would ban the use of e-cigarettes within enclosed spaces of town-owned and operated property. The town staff met with the American Heart Association, the American Lung Association, and the American Cancer Society, who commented that they would like to see the ordinance go further, treating e-cigarettes the same as tobacco products, and banning use in all public enclosed spaces. These organizations are currently neutral on the proposed ordinance. Arizona's Concerned About Smoking also shared the opinion that e-cigarettes should be treated the same as public smoking of cigarettes. Additionally, town staff met with the Gilbert Chamber of Commerce and Offbeat &amp; Unique, a local e-cigarette retailer. The chamber is also neutral on the proposed ordinance, but would change their positions if regulations on use were imposed on businesses. Offbeat &amp; Unique believe the town should not regulate any ban on the use of e-cigarettes. On September 9, the town's Parks, Recreation, and Library Services Advisory Board voted to support the proposed ordinance, and Mr. Bruce Urban, General Manager of AZ ICE, also expressed his support for the proposed ordinance. The Small Business Alliance will be considering the ordinance at their meeting this evening. Unless there are any questions for me or for Brooke, I'll turn it over to Mike Hamlin, who will give you an overview of the proposed ordinance for your consideration.
So after we last met on this in June, there was a discussion amongst the council on desire to amend our ordinance, or consider amending our ordinance, simply to limit the use of e-cigarettes within government buildings. And so that's what you had before you on Thursday. And so the changes are set forth here on the screen, where we define, first, we define electronic cigarettes, any product containing or delivering nicotine, or any other similar substance intended for human consumption that can be used by a person to simulate smoking, as set forth there, through the inhalation of vapor or aerosol from the product. And that's whether it's e-cigarette, e-cigaret, e-pipe, et cetera, as set forth there. And then we also include a definition of government building, any enclosed area owned and operated by the Town of Gilbert and used for governmental purposes, including but not limited to administrative buildings, maintenance facilities, park facilities, libraries, and recreation centers. And finally, the definition of smoking is altered to simply indicate that it does not, shall not mean the inhaling or exhaling of an electronic cigarette product. And that's done because of the prohibition on the next slide. So Section 42, 268 of our code is the prohibition of smoking in public places, and we add the phrase, "and the use of electronic cigarettes in government buildings," as newly defined. And so we add a new Section B that prohibits the use of electronic cigarettes in government buildings. So the amendments to the code are straightforward, and apply only to prohibiting the use of electronic cigarette products in buildings owned by the town and used for governmental purposes. Does anyone have any questions?
Councilmember Taylor?
Thank you, Mike. Would the parking structure in the downtown be considered an enclosed building?
Probably not enclosed, and it wouldn't be used for governmental purposes. So the parking structure is not...
Okay, yeah, I made the note after the slide about one of the universities included that in their rules, but...
They did, Arizona State did that.
ASU, figures the Sun Devils would be on top of all the details.
So, no, I would say that the parking structure is neither enclosed, nor does it meet the definition of a governmental building. Even though it's owned by the town, it's not used for governmental purposes.
Okay, and another question is, would a town vehicle fall? I noticed that there was others that included vehicles in their policies.
Yes, I noticed that as well, and I, any enclosed area and operated by the Town of Gilbert and used for governmental purposes, I would think that would include town vehicles as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Councilmember Cooper?
So I'm thinking of the Arizona ICE building, which is not owned by the town, but on town-owned property, that's not included?
That it would not be included because it's not used for, I mean, it is owned by the town, but it's not operated by the town or used for governmental purposes.
The building is not owned by the town, but the land...
That's true. That's, I thought, yes.
So that would not be included?
I'm sorry, Councilman Cooper, that's correct. That is a ground lease for that facility.
If, in the future, the town ever needed to rent temporary space somewhere for government purposes, that wouldn't be included, because right now it says owned by the town and operated for government purpose?
That's correct, Councilman Cooper.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Daniels?
Just one, sorry. So there's been somewhat discussion in various places regarding our parks, and what is and isn't allowed in our parks. This ordinance does not include our parks, but we always would have the option, when it goes through a stakeholders group, to be able to include parks, even though they're open spaces, but they are public and they're owned by the town.
Yes, that's correct.
So this ordinance does not include parks, but we have the opportunity to do that.
Yes, it does not address parks.
Mayor, if I may, you know, there is wording, this is parks, facilities, so I think that means like the rec center, McQueen Center, but not the riparian at large. Is that the distinction? Okay.
That's correct.
And just to remind me, because I was asked this question today, is smoking allowed in a park, right now?
I believe it is.
Okay. I think I said that. I think I said, "I believe it is."
Something there, one other.
Councilmember Cooper?
If and when we ever have a stakeholder process about parks, one of the things I'd encourage, there's a whole range of options there, but one of the things I'd encourage is we look at, if we don't ban it in parks in general, I'm not saying that I've even of that persuasion, but that we look at the option of partially kind of enclosed places like skate parks and other areas where you kind of have to do that activity there, even though it might be in the open air, there's not other options. And so I would just ask that if we do that stakeholder process, that they look at some different options, including that.
Thank you. Councilmember Daniels?
I've actually had that question, and it's because I've been to kids' football and soccer games where there's parents alongside the field smoking. Now, because those are actually leased by whatever organization it is that's renting town-owned property, they can apply their rules to that event, but if they're just at the park or the playground and it's not rented, then the town rules apply. And so, that conversation has actually been had before. I would love to see our parks take on that, maybe as a next step, Parks and Rec liaison. Is it you? Yeah, that was you.
Were we pointing to Councilmember Taylor on that one?
You don't have to take a note on my account, I don't get to set agendas, but I think that that would be a great next step. It does make me a little uncomfortable to have kids playing sports and people smoking really close by. Thanks.
Councilmember Ray?
I appreciate the questions and the comments. I just wanted to say thank you to town staff for putting this together. This was a tremendous amount of work. So Brooke, thank you for doing this, and to Heather, and Leah, and Mike, and everyone else who helped. I'm sure there were dozens who we don't know about, but this was a lot of work to come up through all this.
And I think the plan on Thursday night is there potentially, there could be public comments, but as far as the presentation, our presentation was today. And Brooke, thank you. Thank you. We will return to agenda item number one, which, if you could exclude 11 and 12, because I do need to give you an update on 11 and 12, but are there other agenda items council members would like to discuss today in preparation for Thursday night? Councilmember Peterson?
13 and, I'm sorry, 15 and 25.
Mayor, I just have one, sorry, this has just occurred to me as we talked about the e-cigarettes. Some of the emails that we received, I think a lot of people are confused about what our ordinance actually says, that they believe, at least from the emails that I received, that they think that we're applying this to all public, even privately-owned restaurants and things like that. We're not, but we can just continue to reiterate that point in any communication that we have that gets sent out, because I think there's some confusion out there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Peterson, Councilmember Ray, Councilmember Taylor, Councilmember Daniels, Councilmember Cooper. Okay, let's go 13, or, let's see, 15, and then 25, and then I'll come back to 11 and 12. So Councilmember Peterson on number 15.
Mayor, I do have a couple of questions for staff, I'll just lead with that, and then kind of see if we get a little more clarity on this. But this is the Transportation Master Plan, and in particular, I was reviewing the prioritization criteria, and I think there may be some work that needs to be done. But let me ask a couple of questions. In that table, there's a 10 points that are awarded for the funding category to projects that have no identified funding source. I'm trying to figure out why that would be...
Councilmember Peterson, just for help, on the plan, what page is that?
It's actually, I think, at the very last page. I want to say 216, but I can pull it up here.
If it's not the last page, it's the second-to-last page.
Oh, darn it, I was so close, so close. Anyway, yeah, so on that page, you'll notice there's some criteria that are used to decide prioritization of projects, which is great, because it points out in the plan that there's most definitely not going to be money to do everything in the plan, so we need to figure out how to prioritize them. But I couldn't understand, there's an asterisk down below the table that says, "If criteria do not apply to a particular project, a score of zero would be assigned." So if something doesn't fit a criteria, zero would be the score. I'm just trying to understand why funding, if there's no identified funding source, why that wouldn't be a zero for that category? I mean, it's hard to get worse than nothing available.
Sure. Councilmember Peterson, Mayor Lewis. Eric Kaderian, the Town Traffic Engineer. I think with that category for prioritization, a lot of times, projects are brought forward. Many projects in our CIP are 10 years out that don't have an identified funding source, if it's, you know, and I think we based our prioritization table when we spoke a little bit on the city of Chandler's, they have this for their CIP. So, you know, we decided to go with that score that, there will be a score, it's the lowest score possible, without being zero for not an identified funding source, because some projects are 10 to 15 years out.
I guess this kind of gets to another question, though, as far as weighting things on cost and funding. I'm still, I'm not sure how this directly addresses the question of how we decide what to put our funding to. So we're saying if it's in the CIP, but how did it get in the CIP? How is that process done to decide? Because there's going to be multiple projects, and there may be funding sources that could do either one, but not all. I'm trying to understand how that decision is made. It seems like this plan should help decide what that is, but it seems like this is kind of picking up after some prioritization's already been done. Help me understand that.
Sure. Councilmember Peterson, it's actually, this will be done before the CIP projects, or the CIP process. This is actually, how we've envisioned it, is this will help us with transportation projects, and we'll do this prioritization before we go through the CIP and budgeting prioritization. There's a few different questions and ranking systems for the CIP process. This is really to help us have a tool to look at, you know, scores, and it may come out that, you know, the highest three scores, there may be a project that's number four or five that is deemed worthy also, but it's really to help us have a tool and make sure that we're looking at many different categories for a project and seeing the benefit. So, the prioritization table that's in the Transportation Master Plan is meant to be before the CIP process. It's for our engineering department and our public works department to weigh transportation projects.
Well, that's going to be, we're going to have a circular logic problem if this has to precede CIP, but this relies on an outcome from CIP. So I'll talk more about this with you offline, but I had another question about...
And Councilmember Peterson, real fast, and I wanted to keep going, but Councilmember Daniels, I think you had a point on that last subject.
I do. In fact, our Higley and Baseline intersection, which you might remember, is a perfect example of this. This was more than 10 years out on the priority. We didn't have an identified funding source for it, but that was the number-one intersection that we got complaints from citizens on. And so as a council, we asked staff to go find a way through a development agreement and through savings from other construction projects, because they're budgeting a certain amount, right? But if they're able to come in under budget and completing those, then there's a block of money that's been saved, so we don't have to go above our voted and approved budget amount. They took savings from other projects, and were able to complete Higley and Baseline intersection, and then again, enter into development agreement with a property owner. So had that not been in our CIP, or had that not been in our Transportation Master Plan and identified, it would have been a lot more difficult to make it happen. But because it was there, and because we recognized there was a need in the community, we had the ability as policymakers to move that up in the priority level. And so I think that there is value in it, and I think that's why we go through some of these planning and transportation processes, is because even if we don't have an identified funding source, if we find that one of our intersections is the most traffic-prone or accident-prone intersection, we want to have the ability to move some things around and change that. And so, to that question, that's how I would answer it.
Oh, that's totally, I totally agree with you, and that's really, kind of goes to my concern, is how exactly we're analyzing the need for a project. And I see some criteria that seem to relate to that, but it seems like more of a simple cost-to-benefit analysis, just like we see in the street section. It uses a volume versus capacity, which is another way of saying demand versus supply analysis, to decide which things to do first. It's very mathematical, makes a lot of sense. It just seems like we should have a little more clear, here's the demand and need for this project versus, and it costs, you know, again, there's a ratio between cost to benefit we're analyzing. I'm just having trouble with this criteria. I think there's some circular logic in here, and anyway, we'll talk a little bit more, but other than that, I think the plan is great, there's a lot of value here. I think we've done, at least whoever's been involved, I don't want to take credit myself, but there's some great work here. It's great. I just have some concerns about the prioritization criteria. I'll talk with you more about it, but I just want to put that out there. I think there may be some opportunity for clarification there.
Thank you. Thanks, Eric. Councilmember Peterson on 25.
First of all, I want to thank staff for helping me on this one. You'll notice here in the packet, there's a really great, okay, well, I think it's a great line, because they refer to externalities. That was cool. Anyway, it's on page... they refer to externalities. That was cool. Anyway, it's on page 735 of the PDF packet. But anyway, this is related to the outdoor animal runs, and I completely agree with the need to regulate externalities. But if you go to the amended, recommended language under, let's see, 4.508D, that could be used to apply to, to an outdoor run and a building on the same property, which wouldn't be regulating an externality in that case. That wouldn't be an externality. So what staff did was they provided some optional language. I just want to kind of throw out there. Hopefully, we can get some agreement on it. I don't want to put words in there. Oh, look at that. That was really cool. Okay, so on an adjacent lot or suite, the point being, you're not protecting somebody from themselves, but you're protecting a neighboring property from an externality or an offensive odor or problem on a neighboring property. So if we could add that, I think that would significantly improve that language. And so I just want to throw that out there. Otherwise, I am still looking, reaching out to people who may be affected to get their input, but I've been assured that grandfathering in of existing uses would take place. I think it's pretty reasonable what's being asked for. But anyway, just want to throw that out there.
Jordan, while you're at the microphone, give a 30-second overview of this agenda item 25.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, members of town council. Very quickly, this B batch only has three components to it. The first component is providing a little bit more flexibility for non-commercial keeping of large animals in a residential setting. This was discussed, actually came out of a board of adjustment case, which the nice thing about having your planning commission also serve as your board of adjustment, is they're well aware of zoning adjustment issues. Planning Commission directed staff to do some research on this, and we looked at other jurisdictions and what you're seeing here, this type of language is more reflective of what you would find in other zoning ordinances. This item we just discussed, again, this is just coming from complaints we've gotten at the zoning counter, other types of anecdotal observations, the change. Appreciate the feedback. Councilman Peterson contacted staff. We had a really good discussion about this, and this is a good change moving forward. Yeah, sorry.
So a while ago, we changed the chicken coop rule that didn't have to be 100 feet from, does this, are there such a thing as chicken runs? I don't know. But I'm curious if we have conflicted with those two things.
Mayor, Councilwoman, great question. Chicken runs in a commercial setting, I suppose might, but I think the text amendment you referred to was chicken runs in a residential setting, which is somewhat common in a rural residential setting. But we can certainly look at that and make sure we're not overlapping with what was intended to be residential with now a commercial intent.
Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess the question is, is 100 foot, I mean, how did we come up with 100 feet in this commercial setting? Because we would, we would hate to, well, I certainly understand why I personally would want 100 feet away from me, but at the same time, there may be some parcels that just can't accommodate that.
Sure. Thank you, Councilmen. 100 feet is actually pretty common in zoning ordinances when we're talking about aviaries, apiaries, the types of animal keeping that does create more noise than another type of animal keeping or other types of negative externalities. So that 100 feet is fairly standard. On a site-by-site basis, if we had a narrow lot come in, they wanted to do this use, they would certainly still have the variance process to prove that their 80-foot separation is still meeting the intent of the code and still have that relief available.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
I think the question is, and I think it's a good one, is does this conflict with what we've allowed? So the yard that the chicken run, wander around in, is that going to be considered an outdoor run? And therefore, now, what we did to expand the opportunity for chickens in residential lots is now being affected by this language.
Sure. Councilman, again, this regulation ties specifically to commercial animal services. So if you have a animal hospital that focuses on chickens, I suppose in theory, they might have an outdoor exercise run for chickens, in which case, we would want the regulation to apply. Outside of that, residential chicken keeping or whatever is a separate matter.
I'm sorry. I see that it's from any residential use, but you're saying from commercial to residential, not from residential to residential. Okay, thank you.
And corporate flags. Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. Jordan, I wanted more information on A, C, and E. A is, would be a restriction of only one corporate flag allowed per business. Why not two or three? And then C, well, I'll go to the next question after you answer that one.
Thank you, Councilmen. One of the points of feedback we received from the Design Review Board, actually, was that we'd not allow these to proliferate. So they were supportive of the one flag per business requirement. Above and beyond that, looking at other zoning ordinances that segregate corporate flags from the rest of your signage requirements, that was the standard. So the three or four jurisdictions that actually have a separate corporate flag regulation, they only allowed one per business. So that's where part A was coming.
Okay. And C is a restriction of the flag to a pole. If I'm understanding this right, maybe, and maybe I'm not, is the provision here, either freestanding or building integrated? So we're not, we're not allowing, or we wouldn't allow them to hang their corporate flag on their building. It has to be on a flag pole.
Mayor, Councilman, they would have to attach some type of pole to hang the flag off of to the building, but the pole itself could be mounted to the building.
To the building, okay. And then the last one is they can only fly their own company logo. Can you give me the story, why they can't fly another logo?
Councilman, the intent was to allow for companies to show off their brand, if you will. So to the degree that a business would want to show off the brand of another business, we didn't anticipate that issue, nor did the ordinances. We looked at for comparison purposes. And I would also note that this regulation does not remove the ability to do government flags as well. So we're not restricting that. We're simply saying to do a corporate flag, it must be your corporate logo that you're showing.
Thank you.
I know that's kind of maybe farther than we need to go, but I guess, let's say, you were considering a merger with another company and you wanted to put their flag up, this ordinance would not allow that if they came to visit, so.
Yeah, that's what I was kind of thinking about when, you know, I would fly into Honeywell's headquarters when I worked for them, and we would potentially have Lockheed Martin there because we're working on a government contract there. And usually, when your big partner would come in, you'd have a welcome, you know, fly their flag or give them reserved parking or some, some kind of an open arms. So what I'm thinking of in this case is, you know, Rivellon, this is the kinds of relationships we're looking to build, this large global relationships, and to give them the flexibility to welcome others, flying their logo. You know, it's maybe something that.
As I look right and left, it sounds like we might be open as a council to give some flexibility there. Councilmember Cooper.
Could it be on a temporary basis? Or, I mean, if we put that kind of a comment in the code, that temporarily and whatever temporary means, does that work?
Yeah, because that's typically what I've seen, as long as they're not in violation of it, but.
Yeah. I think the bigger question is if the flag has a picture of a chicken on it, can it be flown within 100 feet of a residential neighborhood?
It may.
Okay, good.
Jordan, if you could, between now and Thursday, maybe show a little more flexibility and some wording. Okay, thank you. Anything else on 25? Jordan, while you're at the microphone, give us a 30-second on 26. And Amy and Nathan, come on down, and we'll ask you to give a 30-second on 24 and 27.
Thank you, Mayor, anticipating that might be asked. Z1417 Powell Heights has a rezoning of 13 acres north of the northeast corner of Al Vista Drive in Chandler Heights. The existing zoning is SF43. They're seeking SF15 with a PAD. Here is the site in question, demarked by the red perimeter line. You can see the area in general is very bucolic. Here is the land use map for the area and the zoning map for the area, the proposed site plan. Again, 13 proposed lots.
And it appears that Planning Commission and others involved, that this seems to be a go, not any major conflict.
Sorry, Mayor. Yes, absolutely. This was unanimously recommended by the Planning Commission.
Okay. Thank you on 26. Nathan on 24, 30-second update, please.
Thanks, Mayor Lewis. Yep, this is Perry Farms, 31, just under 32 acres. They're rezoning from SF15, PAD to SF10, PAD. It's approved for 42 lots. They're not changing the land use at all. Let me get my sheet here. I didn't have a PowerPoint. This is what's been approved for. It's 42 lots. Access will be to the north, 156th Street, which connects to Riggs. This is what's approved on it now, and this is what they're requesting. It's an increase of 11 lots. Density is still under two dwelling units, an acre. So really no deviations, just a bit of an increase in the number of lots.
Similar, Planning Commission unanimous vote, school districts, and so I don't see and read any controversy, any conflicts on this one.
Right, nothing yet.
Okay, thank you. Amy on 27.
Good afternoon, Mayor Lewis and Council. This is a 19.67 acre facility. It is going from light industrial PAD to general office, conventional zoning. There is no site plan included in your packet because it is conventional zoning and there is no development plan. We do know that they are coming in with a use permit for congregate care facility. General office is a transitional zoning between light industrial and large lot residential to the west, and staff finds it appropriate. Planning Commission recommended seven to zero approval.
Thank you. And to the team of three there, thank you for those quick updates, and those are always helpful after we've read, just to make sure we're understanding. So to the council, I'm going to go back to agenda items 11 and 12. Before I do, were there any other, okay, on 11 and 12, for those who are joining us in the study session, the council has four direct reports, and we do reviews for the town manager, the town attorney, the presiding judge, and then, and we did that another part of the process last week. The town clerk is done through another process. But for those three, on the agenda for Thursday night, 11 and 12 will be tied to our executive session of just a few days ago. There is a document that has been prepared that I will be signing representing the council that has not been given to the council, and so the public can have access to this verbiage and the council can hear it. I've been asked to read a summary of what we talked about in executive session that now will be voting on in the public meeting on Thursday night. So let's begin with our town attorney. To our town attorney, council is pleased to share your performance evaluation for the fiscal year 2014. Your extensive legal background, integrity, strong work ethic, responsiveness, and rapport with others confirms that you are right for Gilbert. Council set goals for you in your first year, and you have exceeded our expectations. Council recognizes how quickly you have built trust with council and staff and appreciates the seamless transition to build an in and in-house legal team. Within your first year in Gilbert, you have developed an internal legal team, developed a plan for managing external legal support, developed a legal on-call list for external legal support, and developed and implemented a communication plan to elected officials and staff. To date, council is very satisfied with the results. Attached are the strategic goals, organizational goals, and development goals we identified for fiscal year 2015, and I won't go into those. But in summary for the public to know for the council, that is what was documented from our meeting with our town attorney. The presiding judge, Judge Hudson. Council is pleased to share your performance evaluation for fiscal year 2014. We appreciate your strong work ethic, integrity, leadership style, and dedication to the organization and community. Council set goals for you and your last performance evaluation. Over the last year, you have been working to reduce the number of unresolved DUI cases over 180 days. Through these efforts, the court has seen a reduction in jury trial cases since fiscal year 2010. Using offender-paid revenues, you have replaced failing and outdated court security equipment, x-ray equipment, and metal detectors. You have applied Franklin Covey's, Franklin Covey's 40 disciplines of execution, excuse me, four disciplines of execution to improve case purging process. You have implemented elements of court tools, court performance management in conjunction with benchmarking similar courts. And in parentheses, we've got as examples clearance rate, cost per case, and monetary collections. And then you have hosted five court educational events, providing innovative and relevant court education. Through these efforts, Gilbert has become a leader in court education in the metropolitan area. Additionally, you're in the process of purchasing and installing an integrated electronic document imaging and management module for the court's case management system for fiscal 2015. We look forward to a final report on the success of this goal upon completion. And the next paragraph talks about the competencies that were evaluated, and then the final paragraph attached were the organizational goals for the identified fiscal year 2015. To our presiding judge, thank you. To our town manager, a little bit longer, and I'll read about as fast, but try and slow down a couple. Thanks. To our town manager, council is pleased to share your performance evaluation for the fiscal year 2014. Council set strategic goals, organizational goals, and development goals for this rating period. Several goals had a target date of June 2014, all of which you have completed and exceeded our expectations. Due to your fiscal management this year, Gilbert received six bond rating upgrades, including an S and P upgrade on our geo-bonds to A++ from AA. Additionally, Gilbert received $33.9 million in interest savings through debt refinancing due to an early payoff. In fiscal year 2014, Gilbert's full-time equivalent ratio decreased from 5.7% to 5.36%. Gilbert continues to provide the lowest cost for services when compared to other major cities in the Phoenix metropolitan area. You've implemented organizational programs, including Franklin Covey's Four Disciplines of Execution, Lean Sigma, Employee Safety Reset, and Performance Benchmarking, all of which are positioning this organization for continued and future success. Strategic planning was another focus area in fiscal year 2014. Through your leadership, Gilbert developed a transportation master plan, parks and recreational master plan, long-range infrastructure plan, long-range revenue plan, technology roadmap, and staffing study. These detailed plans are all critical for the organizations we look to build out. Your efforts in this area are unprecedented and much appreciated. The digital government initiative continues to exceed our expectations. The increased presence on social media, video manager updates, Spark, and digital state of the town continue to provide a significant impact to the way we communicate to the public. The development of the communication initiative has opened communication channels with all levels, developed an input feedback mechanism, as well as provided clear and consistent communication. The implementation of the STAR Employment Performance Management Program was a huge task and crucial for the organization's success. This new process fosters and creates a work environment in which Gilbert employees are enabled to perform at the best of their abilities and accomplish their mission of work. The STAR program will improve recruitment and retention, motivate individual and organizational performance, incentivize exceptional performance, provide clarity, and is flexible and responsive to the changing need of the organization. And then last paragraph are also the attached strategic goals for next year. So to the three, that is a summary. The council is very pleased with performance, appreciative of great things that have happened, and there's some goals for next year, which we're looking forward to, and also want to be team members with you in accomplishing those goals. I realize to the council, that was fairly fast, and as I turned to see if that was representative of what we talked about, slightly unfair to say, was there anything we missed or needed to be reworded, but I'll still ask the question. Thank you. To the council, before we recess this part of the night, was there anything else that needed to be talked about? I will just simply note that we will see, coming out through Gilbert Digital, that the town of Gilbert, the Arizona Republic, and the Gilbert Historical Museum are partnering on a civic engagement project to figure out just what Gilbert residents want to call themselves. Are we Gilbertans, Gilberters, Gilbertonians? There are five options that will be available for voting, and when the vote. There are five options that will be available for voting, and when the voting opens, we'll have till November 14th to vote. So I'm mentioning it tonight, because as soon as the voting begins, we want to spread the word, get tweets out, get our residents voting, because at the Gilbert Days Festival on Saturday, November 22nd, we will be announcing what a Gilbert residence would like to be called. And one last item, today I did have the privilege, there is a nonprofit organization called Tumbleweed, and with our recent community services dialogue, this particular organization provides a center for our homeless youth. And they have a facility in Tempe, and a facility in the greater Phoenix area, in central Phoenix, and I was quite impressed, and I just add that as possibly, as a council, we were not aware of that organization, and we do have information. And on that note, I will entertain a motion to recess this special meeting and reconvene in an executive session. Is there a motion?
No.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
With that motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We will recess to the executive session.